Good evening. Welcome to the Village Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 29th. It is now 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Please remain standing and make it take a moment of silence and remember our servicemen and women serving our great country. Thank you. Okay, the next upcoming meetings, the next regular scheduled Village Board meeting will be held on Monday, October 5th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. The next workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 26th at 7:00 PM. And the following regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees is scheduled for Monday, November 2nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Hey, did you want to do a roll call?
I always forget the roll call vote. Thank you. At this time, a roll call vote. Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Albert.
Present.
Trustee Gerard.
Present.
And myself, and the village clerk is present along with Richard Glickel and Robert Magrino. Okay, thank you. Okay, up first is the fire department for their update.
Jeremy, you can unmute yourself.
And I would like to have the village employees turn on their video if possible.
Go in the other room if you don't mind. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ken, we can't see you, though.
All right, give me a second. I'm gonna turn it on.
Oh.
Let's see, up there it is. Actually, you know what? It won't let me turn on every time I go over my name. Oh, there it is, sorry.
Oh, no. There you go.
Beautiful. Good evening, Village Board. Two items on the agenda and then just one quick question. Yeah, first item is a new member for the volunteer host company under 16... or excuse me, under 18.
Yeah.
And secondly, I had put on the agenda an update to the HVAC in both firehouses. However, I am having a very hard time getting in contact with HVAC people that want to do the job. So I'm still working on it and hopefully I'll have an answer soon. Lastly, is about a month ago, I had dropped off the paperwork for the resolution for the LoSAP COVID, the COVID-LoSAP addition. Do we know what the status of that is?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No.
Because I believe-
Wait, where did you drop it off? You said you dropped it off?
I'm sorry, I emailed it.
Emailed it?
Yes, yes, so-
LoSAP COVID.
Did that go to the whole board?
I believe so. I'd have to double check. It was the resolution that we had Penflex write up for us.
Draft resolution. No, it didn't go to the whole board. Let's see, hold on. There it is. Nope, that was an oversight there.
Okay.
Hey, Jeremy, could you talk a little bit about the car wash fundraiser, how that's gonna-
Yes, I'm sorry about that. So that's gonna be basically, it's a drive-through. The people are gonna stay in their vehicles. They're not gonna exit. They're gonna pull in the firehouse from the front. They'll have their vehicle washed and then as they exit, they'll pay and leave.
Wouldn't a rain date be easier for you guys so you don't have to pre-wash the cars?
Wouldn't a rain date be... What do you mean?
Because if it's raining, you don't have to work so hard to clean the car.
Oh, so we should do it on the rain date?
Yeah.
Yeah. I like that idea. And that's it. That's all I got. Anybody have any questions or-
When is the car wash?
October 25th with the rain date of November 1st.
What's the time for the car wash, Jeremy?
The time exactly, I don't have. I will email that to the board once I get it.
Okay, great. All right. All right, very good.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you guys hear me or no? No.
Now we hear you.
You hear me now? Okay.
Yeah, everybody has to unmute themselves.
Yeah. Is Ms. Sandy stood on for her tree advisory update?
I did see her name listed.
You did? Okay.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Okay, we hear you. Yes.
Okay.
We can't see you. Can you turn on your camera?
Oh, I guess I didn't get on with the camera, but we can go through this without me showing my face. Sorry.
Okay.
Did you all receive the documents I sent?
Yes.
Okay. Shall I go through them?
Yes, if you would like to present it to the board and, you know, I mean, the fashion that you sent it out, that would be helpful.
Okay, and I'm thinking we're not going to resolve all the issues tonight. This is just an overview-
Yes.
-of thoughts that we have. I just lost your... I'm not... Let's see. Okay, so let me read it and then you can ask questions. So the first topic was the Bartlett Tree Experts DC Best Practices Risk Assessment and Risk Mitigation Report, the RFP Phase 1. I do have the attached report for reference. While I and the entire committee are extremely pleased, as I am sure you all are, with the exceptional pruning and trimming that was done last spring, our trees look wonderful. They no longer look like bushes and most important, now we have addressed the criteria of utility interference, damage to our snowplow trucks, and addressed for the most part the safety and health of the trees. There is one situation that I noticed immediately and with COVID and the municipality closed down, I haven't addressed it, but now I am addressing it. And that is that the tree branches were only pruned and trimmed on the side that overhangs the road. I recently had a discussion with Joe Hunt and briefly with Charles Suiski regarding the situation. As I have recently conducted a tree inventory for Phase 2 for an RFP, I investigated further for both moving forward and the work priorly done. My concern was not only the aesthetics of the shape of the trees, but also the balance regarding safety and the health of the trees. So with that said, and I just... Just bear with me. I hit the wrong button and I knocked off my... what I had written. Okay, so if you look at the pictures that I sent, 1 through 3, Washington Avenue, you can see how unbalanced the trees are. It was all pruned on one side and the other side, every branch is still hangover. Joe informed me that the trees could only be pruned and trimmed on the side that overhangs the road due to the encroachment on property owner's property. So I understood that. You're certainly not gonna be messing up somebody's lawn and cutting branches without their permission. But I also spoke with the Bartlett Tree Experts directly to Jason Selkic, the head arborist, and he enlightened me about the encroachment of private property when village trees are trimmed and pruned. According to him, if the tree company providing the work needs to encroach on the property, they just need to get permission. And if that permission is needed after a walkthrough, I am saying that as a tree committee chair, I would be happy to get that permission. So what I'm looking to achieve here is that we... I'm gonna go back a little bit to our village trees, the valuable asset that they are, the health, the safety, the liability if it's not done properly. So my suggestion is that we move forward and that we include Phase 1 trees to be done properly. When the walkthrough takes place, the bid responders will give assessment of each tree, including those from Phase 1, and identify the need encroachment permission. And there again, I'm willing to- So-
Wait, Sandy, I'm sorry, just let me back up. So you're looking to incorporate the trees that we already pruned to prune on the sidewalk side, at a property owner's side?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And if a permission is needed because encroachment in order to do those branches would be on the person, property owners, I would be willing... There's not that many trees. I walk the village almost every day, so I would be willing to get that permission.
Is that something we should be concerned with, with the obtaining of the permission of release or something, Mr. Magrino?
No, it depends on where the tree is. Sorry, Rob.
Right, I mean, if it's in the village, if it's in the right-of-way, it's not necessary, but-
It's not necessary for what? The health and safety of the tree?
No, no, no. You're saying the sign-off of a property owner.
Oh, I see. I understand. Well, if that's the case, then we don't need to get permission, but-
Well, if you're going on their property to the extent to cut it, you know, I'm not sure. I don't have, I don't, I didn't get the documents that you're referring to, so if you want to send them-
Oh, I'm sorry, Rob.
That's okay. I'll take a look.
Well, according to the arborist, we would need the permission. They would want the permission. So I'm willing to, you know, it's not that many trees and we have plenty of time to get it after the walkthrough. So I'm, you know, as a committee chair, I'm willing to get that permission.
Yeah, that's fine. But again, if you want to send me the information ahead of time so I can take a look.
I will, Rob. Yeah.
Sandy, the price for the follow-up cutting to make the trees balanced, that's $140,000?
No, no, that's the value, the asset value, the communicative value of our trees as per the Bartlett survey.
Do we have any idea of what the fee would be to-
Oh, sure. That would be, that would be in the bid response.
All right, so we don't know how much it will be. They have to tell us.
Of course not. What we would do is send out the RFP. We would include those trees in the walkthrough. Some trees will not have to be pruned. Some are balanced. Only the trees that are, he also, I'm learning. He also explained to me some branches should not be cut because they could harm the tree more than hurt the tree. So a responsive bidder is going to give us the entire assessment and then the bid. And of course, we also have to, based on how much money we will have, what our budget allows. But I think that they should be included so that health, safety, and if, you know, if the tree isn't balanced and properly trimmed and pruned, we could have a liability on our hands, let alone someone get hurt.
Sandy, if you don't mind, with the initial RFP for the pruning, did that RFP just include the pruning of the roadside?
I believe so. I had asked Charles for a copy of the bid so I could have had it to present tonight, but I did have a brief discussion with him and maybe he's on the Zoom call, but he did say, I believe that that's what they included, just the, you know, for the utility, for the danger, for the snowplows, et cetera. Again, we could look into this a little bit more, you know, conclusively before the bid gets written, but if we saw that bid, I would have been able to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
So with that said, you know, that's my request and that's the first topic. I also have done an inventory for Phase 2 and the second inventory includes west of Washington, including Rockland Terrace and Prairie Avenue. I then did an inventory of Ratnempho Avenue, all the side streets down to the border of Mawa. And I am aware that that's quite a number of trees. It probably goes over what we thought would be the next... Oh, I also did the pool area because we have a lot of trees over in the pool area. So it's going to depend on our budget and it's going to depend on the grants that we're going to be able to obtain. And I address that further down.
Sounds like you put a lot of time into this, Sandy. Thank you.
I did. But you know what? You know how long I've been... Trees are so important, let alone for the monetary asset, climate warming, you know, the breathing, there's just, and the aesthetics. Don't you all love the way Washington Avenue is beginning to look with that canopy? I think it's, I think it's great.
And I will tell you, we have Bartlett pear trees. We have three of them in our backyard. And they are an interesting tree because if properly not managed and literally within six months probably not managed, the tree will split in half. But I will tell you, they are extremely resilient and Charlie, you face my backyard. They've grown back pretty well with being just about knocked down to the ground by windstorms. So they are very, they're very particular about how the wind hits them.
And they're beautiful in the spring, aren't they just gorgeous?
They are. They are, but they are very particular with the wind.
Right. Our downtown this spring looked beautiful with the Bartletts. They were, it was just gorgeous and unfortunately COVID got in the way of people walking up and down the sidewalk, but... No, you're right, Joe.
Hopefully not next year, Patzy. Sorry, Sandy.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay. So that's where we are with that more... I think the next step is going to be to put the bid out and include them and see what kind of, the way we write it. Bartlett had also said, Jason said he'd be more than willing to help us, you know, even someone that responds to a bid can help with the spec of a bid. So maybe this next go-around, you know, we can make sure it's written a little bit more detailed. Okay, so then, is that enough? Any more questions on the first?
No, I think that's great. You put a lot of work into this, so you can continue.
Okay, great. The second topic is the tree removal law, which we've all been working on. And again, COVID got in the way. We had started with this on the tree committee. But the most important thing that I have found, again, research calling other villages, is the example that is attached and that's the Nyack Village of Nyack and their tree removal law, the application and the instructions. And what I like about this is it does put a lot of onus on the homeowner. The application they charge is $50 to apply for the permit and the property owner is responsible to obtaining a certified arborist to address the tree and then that is submitted to the planning board for approval. And it's gotta be a certified arborist and they have to meet certain criteria. If the tree cannot, another tree cannot be replanted on the property owner's property, then in, you know, because of the value of trees, then another tree could be planted somewhere else in the village. Again, this all needs to be read and then when we, you know, get further into approval and maybe you'll want to have more dialogue and wait for us to have a meeting in October, which I'm planning to do. But I do think we definitely need to address this because I just saw a tree come down in my neighborhood and it was a village tree, so it wasn't even a property, so.
So you want the homeowner to pay for an arborist?
That's what Nyack is having done. Well, why, if you, if you read the criteria for taking a tree down and our existing law, the one we have on the books that we do not address, has criteria that says you can arbitrarily take the tree down and it's been done in this village.
Well, that's a different conversation.
You're right. So when do you want to have that?
Joe, is your concern the arborist versus a tree service?
An arborist, it has to be-
No, an arborist is much different than-
That obtains an arborist, according to Nyack.
An arborist is different than a tree service. They're totally two different worlds. Yeah, tree service is coming in to cut your tree down or trim your branches to make sure that your tree is safe, make sure that you don't have any bugs in your tree. That's what a tree service does. An arborist, on the other hand, will evaluate the tree, will tell you what tree to plant, will tell you if you take this tree down and every tree has to be planted because the apron of the tree is how wide the hole has to be dug in order to have the root ball proper.
Right, but this is, this is for the removal of the tree, so I don't know what the difference is for a tree service to remove the tree is versus an arborist removing the tree.
They're gonna have a totally different opinion. A tree service, if you call a tree service and say, I need this tree removed and they're gonna charge you, making up a number, $500, an arborist is gonna come in and say, you don't need to remove the tree. We can fix the tree. A tree service comes in and does a job that you're hiring them for and arborist is much different.
And if you have an asset that is valued at whatever, and each one of, that is valued and there is a certain criteria that an arborist puts on a tree and there's a formula that an arborist, a certified arborist, can determine whether a tree is unhealthy and the reasons. And you do have to read that more clearly and maybe we can discuss it again. As I said, maybe this doesn't have to be resolved at the next, you know, board meeting. I'm interested in having the board address a second RFP for Phase 2 and including, you know, the full pruning and trimming of the trees that were done. But the tree removal is something that I think maybe we need to go into a little bit more detail with the DPW, the tree committee chair, Charlie Barone, and really vet this out, but as an example of what to use. I think Nyack's the best and I've researched Ridgewood, Waltwick, Allendale. They're a lot more complicated than Nyack.
Yeah, they, yeah.
So it does need more discussion, but it's gotta be addressed.
I recall, oh, sorry, Joe.
So as far as the tree permit goes, I'm gonna look into that, Sandy and-
Thanks.
Read it and read it thoroughly because I've always gotten a tree permit to cut down the trees that we have, that we had no choice because we knew the trees were damaged and they had to come down. As you know, I hate to cut trees down. But, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at those rules a little bit harder and see what actually it represents, okay?
I welcome that. And I also, Joe, what I'd like to do is, and I didn't attach it to this because there were a lot of other documents. You've got other business to do. Let me work with you on the existing tree law that we have. We have one.
No, I know we do.
Yeah, so we could kind of compare it and maybe when we work with the tree committee, you know, we could all work together to get something that's, you know, acceptable and protects property owners and ourselves.
And we'll go over this in more detail at a tree committee meeting, which I will be at.
Great, and I'm supposed to, I'm gonna try to have one maybe the third week in October. Okay, we'll work out some dates.
Sandy, how do you proactively enforce this with the permitting? Because like you said, there have been trees cut down despite having a law on the books.
We have to publicize the law, but look at it, look at it carefully, Paul. Other villages, Ridgewood, Hillsdale, Westwood, it's a law. You can't cut a tree down arbitrarily. That's called a procedure.
But we, but we have a law too.
I know, and we're not adhering to it.
But what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, okay, we have a law, but let's just say somebody doesn't know the law exists. They cut down a tree and then we go, well, you weren't allowed to cut that tree down. I mean, that's... Okay, so I don't know, maybe you find them or whatever. I don't know. But the tree is, the tree is dead. It's gone. I'm saying, how do you proactively do it?
Well, you actually have got to have that law published a little bit more and I believe that that's part of, with all our social media and every other way, we have to make the villagers more understanding. But if you have a law on the books, ignorance is not a reason that you don't uphold the law. And our tree law actually has a $5,000 fine that someone can, you know, charge for cutting down a tree without, you know, properly going... See, the application is your first guide. When, when an application is put into the village department, you don't just give them, they don't just pay $100. That has to go out and be assessed. And at this point, the issues that we've had when we've had discussions at prior tree meetings was that, you know, the DPW was going out and assessing them and an arborist was not going out. And a tree needs to be, the health of a tree and the reason to cut a tree down needs to be reviewed by an arborist. And other villages do that and Nyack actually passed the burden on to the property owner.
All right, so here's what I would suggest for an immediate solution to this. Ed, can someone, whoever posts everything on our website, can they tomorrow post on our website and you know how you send emails out to everybody on Facebook or, you know, all that, constant contact? Can you please post what our tree law is and the rules surrounding it so that maybe we can mitigate a tree or two being cut down with people not being educated?
Yeah, so you know, hold on, am I muted?
No.
Sure, we can do that. If Sandy, I don't know if you want to be part of that also, develop-
You know what I'd rather do?
That would be user-friendly, that someone would take the time to read about the tree. Oh, do you have a recommendation? That's a great recommendation, Joe. I'm not, I'm just seeing what Sandy's doing.
Let me, let me tell you both the existence of the actual- Let me, let me tell you both the existence of the actual tree law that we have. I, I didn't attach it, I probably should have, to this document. We have the most ungodly copy of this tree law. And Danielle, she's worked hard, you know, to try to find the original. You don't wanna, I'll send it to you, the whole board, you know, so you can see it by tomorrow morning. I think what you might wanna do is just post that we do have an existing tree law. We're looking into modifying it or, you know, in some cases, you know, just reviewing it. And that if anyone does come to the village, say they do know they have to get a permit. I think they do. But that should be posted. And whatever, and make certain they know they have to get a permit. And then we can kind of take it from there and, and look into this law. We don't wanna give everybody culture shock because it's really not been discussed. Sarah Mondale, I, we all have remembered her past couple of meetings where she got up and talked, you know, passionately because all those trees were cut down in her yard or the yard next door to her. And, you know, they really did not meet, meet the criteria of our existing law.
All right. So we're gonna, we're going to, we're gonna look at it, review it. And I'm gonna ask Kathy Mills, who handles the constant contact and the Facebook, and we'll, we'll try to develop something. It might not be tomorrow, but we'll see that, we'll try to develop something. And Sandy, maybe they can reach out to you at the same time and, and review it. So we have, we have a consistent message.
Right. We, the most important thing is to let them know now that they must come in for a permit.
Okay.
And, and that message, if we get that out, then we are working with someone. We're engaging them. And then, Joe, I love the idea that you're gonna work with this. Charles, you're part of the tree committee. We'll have a meeting soon and, and, you know, it's gotta be done correctly. But I do like this law. And that's the only point I wanted to make.
Sandy, can I, can I just make a suggestion that, you know, maybe it would help, it's, it's, it's fewer parties to communicate to. But it would also potentially, you know, prevent the tree coming down. Where we have to take, you know, kind of reactive measures of fines and whatever. But if we could make it known by the various tree companies throughout the county and maybe the adjoining counties to say, suffering requires a permit for you to cut down a tree. And you need to request that of whoever's at, whoever's hiring you to cut down a tree. You need to request that and keep that on file. Or, or you're subject to fine as well. Or potentially maybe, you know, not permitted to cut down trees anymore in the village. I'm just trying to think of some way where we could prevent it.
But that's already a place, Paul. Every, every tree company out here knows each village and what the criteria is.
Okay.
Here, they do know they have to come in for the permit. It's what happens after the permit.
Okay. Well, I, look, I can tell you firsthand.
In upholding our own law. And maybe it needs some changing. So that's where we are here. But thank you all. This is, we, this is, we're moving ahead.
Sandy, that's not happening. People are not coming in for permits. I've seen, I've seen trees cut down on my street where there's no permitting. People have called and say, I want this tree down. And it comes down. So, so.
Well, we need to put that on the constant contact. I can work with Kathy, letting people know that.
I'm talking about communicating that to the tree services, not, not the, I mean, you're right, the residents need to know. But, you know, if a tree service says, you know, somebody calls up a tree service, that, we need them to be asked, do you have a permit? Did you get a permit from the village?
Every tree service I've ever used has, will not cut a tree down in this yard unless they see a permit. So it might be out of our scope. And I totally agree with you, Paul, totally. Like, do you happen to remember who those people were by any chance?
I mean, I've, I've seen them coming, but I, I know, I don't recall the, the names of the companies, but I could probably find out.
We probably, well, we always use New York. We used one New Jersey, which was Mawa. So maybe we have to make the, the band a little wider than just local.
Yeah.
And Sandy, just that I hope we're taking.
If we have something published on our website about a trade permit being needed. If we have this under constant contact, that verbiage go out, their licenses in jeopardy. So we really, and they, they look at that stuff. If they know suffering's lax, they'll come in and do it. But if they know that they're, cause I'll tell you, they won't go near Montebello. They get fined big time. So all good stuff. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandy. Great job.
Okay. Now, third topic, and this, these will be brief. Plan applications. We need to, John Wicks has already told me, he's keeping me informed. Jason at Bartlett, we need to be on top of the grants. And we will be. And they will assist in the correct writing. So when Fred, you know, or the grant writer goes to write them. Because these applications will be based, the awards on the DEC best practices. And the bid, if the bid is written correctly, we will be refunded, you know. It was, there were five grants last year, twenty-five thousand dollars apiece. We spent thirty-two thousand. We might have, had we been able to apply for those grants, been awarded, you know, twenty-five thousand of that. So. And then the most important thing is we do have to, all this has to be based in with our budgeting. So fourth topic, because I know you've got other things to do, would be the engagement with the DPW and the tree committees. An example, I just want, oh, my typo there. I just want to, and the whole tree committee wants to give kudos to the whoever is responsible under Joe's and Charles's department with the tree trimming of the memory and village trees. And those pictures, four A and four B. And Charlie Barone, I think you're smiling when you see the hockey tree. Look at the beautiful job that was done on the pruning and trimming of those trees. That's what a tree should look like, balanced. So if Joe's on, Joe, who was responsible? You said somebody on your team?
Can Joe unmute if not?
We're gonna, so Sandy, that was a great job. They did a great job on the pruning.
It was, it was mellow.
The trees looked great. And we look forward to the next round, phase two. And then fair and balanced trim treeing. So thank you very much.
All right. Just one more last second. It was Street Department, Mr. Nello.
Mr. Nello. Very good job, Mr. Nello.
So we just would like to be aware when that happens. Cause we are in touch with these memory, you know, these memory trees are really important to the donors. So we just wanna be engaged, you know, aware when that happens so that we don't say, oh, gosh, we didn't know that. You know?
Okay.
So if they would let us know. And then fertilizing, the watering, the planting. Maybe we could do some kind of, again, you know, it's shared information. So the committee knows that, you know, this is all taking place. And one of the points was, you know, how much I complained about the watering of the trees this summer. And it was told that they, they were, they were planted near sprinklers. There was no sprinkler system near those trees. So, you know, to move down forward so you can go on to other things.
All right. Thank you very much.
I had a couple of quick, quick questions for Sandy. So number one was, you'd mentioned about Sarah Mondale and trees cut down. Was this the same thing? I'm trying to remember if it was something Sarah Mondale discussed or, or another resident at what point? At one point, I recall hearing that Orange and Rockland cut some trees down that might have been getting closer interfering with some power lines. But they didn't do so, they didn't let the property owners know that, you know, they didn't let the village know. They didn't let anyone know. And they just went in and did this. And I recall hearing about this about a year ago. Is this the same thing?
Yeah. Absolutely true. And that was not the same situation. With Sarah Mondale, this was a mayor, a, a neighbor who just went out and cut down trees, got the permit. I know the tree service. He's fantastic. Billy would never cut a tree down without a permit, but only the permit was obtained. Those trees were too large to be cut down. They were against what our local law is. So with that said, we do have problems with Orange and Rockland, and we have to be vigilant about that. They cut down the trees on Campbell Avenue.
That was it. That was it.
And I don't, you know, they're gone.
Yeah.
But I am, yeah, it's something, the more publicized we have these laws, the more structured we are, the more outside people know and understand. And they don't just go ahead and do it and say, oh, well, we needed to because of the power lines when they weren't near them. So.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sandy.
You're very welcome for all the time.
Thank you for all your time.
I was just wondering if I can make a quick comment?
Yeah. Oh, Mr. Rob.
It's Fred, Fred.
Go ahead.
I just, just a comment about how there were five grants at twenty-five thousand dollars apiece that we missed the opportunity on. We were well aware of every grant opportunity. And due to the information we had at that point in time and the economics of the grant, there was an educated decision made not to go for those. Those were not like one hundred percent grants. They were, had to pay. You would only get reimbursed up to seventy-five percent. Minimum amount you could spend was eleven thousand dollars. And we had a history of only spending like three or four thousand dollars a year. So we didn't know what we were, we were gonna be doing the phase one cost. We didn't know what that was at this point in time. So I'm on top of the DEC grants. The grants that she's talking about are offered every twelve to thirty-six months. They have currently not offered this year. The DEC doesn't know when they're gonna be offered. There's only one grant available right now. And that's for reforestation, where a number of trees have been knocked down in a community. Minimum grant requirement is for the purchase of five thousand trees. I think that exceeds our capacity here within the village of suffering. But if there are any grants that I need to look at and work with the tree committee, I'd be more than happy to. As you know, I've been, I was chair of the committee for the past two years prior to Sandy. And I was instrumental in the formation of it seven years ago and sat on its board. And I've also sit on several other tree committees throughout Rockland and Orange County, Bergen.
Thank you, Fred. That's a great resource. And that, that expense that we were incurring or were not incurring up to that eleven thousand dollars. And we were only expending three thousand dollars. Doesn't sound reasonable to me. But at the same time, as long as we keep our ear to the ground looking for the grants. And if they come out, they, you know, we're aware of it, but working closely with Sandy and making Sandy aware and, and Sandy making us aware. So we're all on the same page. But thank you, Fred, for looking out for those grants and keeping us abreast of what's going on. And also to you, Sandy. At this time, I'd just really like to move on to the public hearing, if that's okay. We're running a little bit behind schedule. So the public hearing, I'd like to make a motion, have someone make a motion to open the continuation of the September twenty-first, twenty-twenty public hearing to authorize the village to address property maintenance condition at twenty-seven Hillside.
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert.
Second, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Magrino, if you'd like to give us an overview?
Sure. This is a, a public hearing authorized pursuant to the village code under property maintenance section two hundred and five. Purpose is to authorize the village, if it deems appropriate after this hearing, to take certain actions with respect to the property at twenty-seven Hillside Avenue. The, what I'm gonna do is ask Randy Ortiz, who I see is on, if he could maybe describe the conditions while he's at twenty-seven Hillside and the actions that he has taken with respect to that. And I have video. I'm gonna try to share it. So Randy, if you can get started and I'm gonna ask you to swear you tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. So if you wanna tell the board what's going on and.
As some, as some of you are aware, there's the house on twenty-seven Hillside Avenue that we're talking about has been a problem for many, many years with too much stuff there, outside storage. And we've pleaded numerous times with the DPW. And it's worse now than it's ever been. As hopefully Rob will show you the video here. If you could put it up, Rob?
Oh, well, I have up the.
The backyard's actually just completely packed with, with everything that you can possibly think of that's been picked up on the side of the roads from around, you know, around the road to Bergen County. To the point where it's actually a huge issue. I mean, if the fire department has to get in there to deal with this house or even the neighboring houses, God forbid there's a fire there, that's also a huge problem. So I, I think many of you probably seen that it's actually coming out into the front yard over the last six months or so. There was never anything in the front yard. Now the backyard is so full, you, you can't even put anything else back there. And it's coming out into the front yard.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mike, I'm, I'm sharing the screen. I don't know if it's.
We can see it.
No, we can see it.
Okay. So I'm gonna play.
So that's the, so this is a view from Hillside Avenue, which is the, this is, we'll just say the right side of the house where the driveway is. And that pickup truck that you see there is, is, is just packed with junk. As well as the inside of the truck, cab of the truck is fully stuffed with junk. And there's a total of five cars in there. There, I believe all of them are unregistered. Unless they've been registered in, you know, recently. Which also is a problem as we don't even, we don't allow any unregistered vehicles in the village of suffering. So can you put any more pictures up, Rob?
Yeah, I'm trying. Hold on. Hold on. And do you recall when you were there? I think it was September was before the.
Yeah. And we, and you know, it's, and, and we, we've received numerous complaints.
All right, here it comes.
On the property, from concerned citizens as well. So this is, this is video. Is that the video, Rob, you're playing?
Yeah.
This is video. This is in the front yard now, all the stuff out in the front yard, as you can see. You know, those are rubber, rubber mats there from a restaurant that are just on the ground there that you put, you know, behind or in the kitchen area. It's, the picture's self-explanatory as, you know, to what you have there.
All right, just, I have two more. I'm sorry. I'll try to make it quicker. Sorry.
So this is the side of the house. So we're walking around now on the left side of the house. This is a view from the, from the, you know, this is the view the neighbors would see from that side. As you can see, the, you, I mean, you can't even walk around behind the house. So if there's ever an operation where you need to get fire equipment and, you know, firefighters in there, that would never happen.
All right. Worked on the last one.
Behind the house, you know, the side of the house, obviously you could, but from the neighboring property. But in the back, you couldn't even set up ground ladders or anything back there.
I have a question. I know you said, you know, the, the vehicles are unregistered or presumed unregistered at this point in case they got registered lately. Are any of them, are any of them though reported like missing or stolen from any?
I don't believe so, Steve. We, we have checked the registrations on some of them. I don't, I don't believe that that's an issue, you know. I guess we won't know a hundred percent on few of them until we take them out. But we were able to get expired registrations.
Okay.
Some of them that we were able to still run. So I don't believe that's an issue.
Okay. I was just curious if that was an additional issue.
And, and.
Just, just a quick note here. We have a person raising their hand. But we'll wait for the presentation by the attorney and the building department. And when we're ready for the public to speak. And when we're ready for the public to speak, by all means, you can raise your hand at this point, and, uh, we'll call on you, um, as, as it comes due.
Are, are we doing on a workshop?
Yeah, it's, no, this is a public hearing, so it's...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Sorry, sorry.
So you're looking at, you know, those two vehicles there are packed with stuff also, um, that you see. And you could obviously see all the other stuff. There's a hot tub cover sitting on top of, not a hot tub. There's just, uh, items all covered with tarps there. And there's also a dumpster that used to be in the front yard, uh, as some of you can probably recall. And it was moved, it was taken away, then brought back and put into the backyard.
Who moved it? A silly question, never mind.
I mean, a, a carding, a local carding company, um, moved it. And, and it was put in the backyard, and I was told, uh, the homeowner that he was gonna load stuff into there, but that never happened. Um, and, and this is what you're, you're seeing back here.
That's unbelievable.
There's a, um, there's...
It's a very large yard.
There's three or four trailers that are back there buried underneath all that stuff in the back, and you're only allowed to have one trailer in your rear yard as well. You know, it's kind of hard to, you, you know, these pictures, um...
Says, says a thousand words.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pictures kind of tell the whole story.
Yeah.
And this has been done, that has been cleaned down to the, down to the ground more than once back there by, by the village, by, you know, our, we've ordered cleanups before.
Very unacceptable that the neighbors need to live next to this.
Okay, and, uh, Randy, if I could, so, uh, I'm gonna actually try to share one more thing, uh, just for the process. Sorry. There was a, uh, a notice to remove the violation. I'm gonna try to share that as well. That was posted on the property. Can you describe what you did with that? And approximately when?
We posted that on the property, um, I believe in August.
I think it was July. The notice to remove, the first one?
Yes.
So is it? The day, July 11th?
That was me.
And indicates, uh, giving an opportunity to remove the items by July 22nd, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the video you took was actually in September, right? So that was after you...
Yes. There was actually more, more items that were placed there since this was done.
All right. Having trouble walking and chewing gum here.
Just to, uh, sort of clarify and whatnot, my understanding, just doing a little research on the property, it has been remediated twice in the past. Is that correct? Can you speak to what years or anything, or?
Yeah, I mean, we, I, I thought it was three times, but I'm getting old, so it could, it could have been...
I think it has been three times.
Other than...
Yeah, I, I remember, I remember two while I've been on the board. At least two.
Okay, I knew about two, maybe three.
Yeah.
Other times, besides now.
Yeah.
What year, what year did it first get remediated, I guess was my question. In other words, I want to get a history on this.
Well, I've been at, I've been around since doing this, since, uh, I've been at it 16 years. So it was, uh, I want to say the couple of years after I started was the first one that I was involved with. Uh, I don't have, I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay, but approximately, so you're saying approximately 12 years ago, give or take?
The first one, I believe, yes.
Okay, 12, 13 years ago, right. And, and yet each time it's remediated, it gets filled again.
Yeah.
Is, is there anything like, no, I mean, I know this hearing is about remediation again, but is there anything we can do to, to concretely prevent it from getting filled again if we...
This is where, I, again, you, we just have to be careful. This is a person's property. Until it gets to a condition that meets the statutory criteria, there's really not much the village can do, you know? So I, I think for the purposes of this hearing, it's to determine if we're gonna clear it up, if there's sufficient evidence to warrant that. So I understand where you're coming from. And to answer it, I guess, briefly, really, it's, it's, you know, it's difficult to, to do something like that. I will say, we have been in touch with the county, which has basically closed off access to the inside because of condition inside, because it's a health hazard. So, you know, this is something the village can do in terms of the outside. If there are not further action can be taken, you know, that's, I guess, address that at the time.
I actually feel bad for the gentleman who owns the home, or whoever owns the home.
Well, he's on, he's on, so he'll have an opportunity to speak. So Randy, did you have anything else? You wanted to add?
I did not.
Okay, so, uh, Michael, if you want to start asking people if they wish to participate and... Or you want to take a motion, open the public portion there?
Mayor, you're muted, Mayor.
You're muted, uh?
Didn't we open it?
Well, I, I like to be... Hold on, guys. We opened, we opened the public hearing. I'm sorry. We opened the public hearing. Mr. Magrino spoke, and now it's a time for the public to, to speak. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak?
Okay, uh, Mayor, we have Ava N. So Ava, would you identify yourself once you're unmuted and, uh, and where you live?
Um, okay. Eva Nordhauser, I'm a Bonner, 116 Bonner Circle West. Um, not knowing the history, but I guess as we know, this is a pathology. And a person, you know, it, it's a compulsive disorder. So my question is, have you tried to be in touch with county health department, possibly, uh, adult protective services, and/or are there any other family members? Because, um, intervention has to be forced from the outside because it causes the person a tremendous amount of anxiety trying to let go of these things. However, it's, it looks like intervention is needed. So I just wanted to share that. That's it.
Thank you. I'll, I'll address that at the end. Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. You can either do that if you're using the app uh, by simply clicking on raise your hand. If you're strictly on a telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will show up as a raised hand. Once we see a raised hand, we'll, uh, unmute you and allow you to speak.
While we're waiting, I do see that, and Randy, if you can confirm that the property owner is John Anzelo. I do see that Mr. Anzelo has called in. I can indicate Mr. Anzelo has called me. Uh, this was supposed to be on originally, I believe, September. Uh, and again, Mr. Anzelo...
It's the 21st.
Right, the, right, the, the 21st, but before then, we set the hearing on the 8th, I believe, uh, September. Uh, and I got word that, uh, Mr. Anzelo is, uh, not able to participate. He's unmuted. Mr. Anzelo, would you like to speak?
Just saying. Yes, yeah. Yes, sir, I would like to.
Go right ahead.
Well, I, I would like to present to the village that the house has been in my family approximately 60 years. 60 years is a long time. I'll be approximately 75 years old. I will also present to the village that I've been homeless, truly homeless for almost 1,000 days and counting. And I think Mr. Randy Ortiz has had a lot of investigation with information that he's been given, and he could substantiate the fact that I've been really homeless. Homeless with a house, that there was an assumption that I was gonna lose the house to a bank. And the problem is, there was no mortgage, no mortgage. And recently, within a year's time, I got possession of the house, meaning in my name, due to, fortunately, legal aid in the county here. Now, at that point, I come to find out that there's an excess of $150,000 in taxes due on the home. And very fortunately, I do have an adult service protection worker. And there's been more than one from the county that has helped me with, with this issue. So you have a house with an exorbitant amount of taxes due that now it's yours. And very interesting, I informed my adult protective service worker that I had some residual income that I was to receive upon a sale of a house from 1982 somewheres else, actually in Bergen County. And this house was put in the auction to be sold for taxes. And they tried diligently to prevent me from filing bankruptcy right up until the last half hour of the auction. The people in attendance there had a choice of buying it at the auction. And the way the auction works, you can't buy your house back. You can't pay the taxes back. That's, that's the way it works in Rockland County. And I hope you will listen to what I'm gonna tell you what transpired. They tried diligently to prevent me for three days to prevent me from filing bankruptcy to protect the loss of my house, and that's very recently. So, yes, trutation, the monies did come forward, $133,000 to a homeless man. So what does he do? He informs his adult service worker that the house was sold. I had her in contact with the other individual that shared 50%. My residual was 133,000. My lawyer had that money in escrow. I had the choice to get the money. I informed Derek Tarson of legal aid that the money was available. We went over to Westchester, the bankruptcy court, and I submitted that information. I've never, ever had that money in my bank account. I forwarded it because of the fact I want to protect my home. 60 years is a long time. And there's a lot of assumptions that are made. There's been some things that are horrendous done to me, saying, I, I don't, I, I don't want to get too far off track with this, but the point is I invested everything I had in my lifetime to try to get back into my house. And I have a question for the people that are here that are knowledgeable. Do you know how much has been charged to my home when they've done these cleanups? I've never, ever seen anything submitted as to what the charges were. And I understand that they submit a bill to the county and the county pays it. And it's not $500 the bill. I think that's a legitimate question someone should ask. And there's been a statement made by your code officer that things are from the sides of the road in Bergen County and different parts. That's a statement he cannot substantiate. And when these things have happened, they have taken snow blowers, chainsaws. I work as a mechanic, a heavy-duty mechanic on trucks to this day. And all of my tools, everything, all my jacks were taken with the understanding that they were gonna put in good safekeeping. And when I went for them, they were gone, gone. And sometimes I would try to get my things, and I found them in a scrap metal dumpster at the DPW. And, and, and I recognized it to the authorities there that run the show. And, and they conforted and dumped the dumpster out. And I had to spend two days to taking my broken parts, broken equipment out of the dumpster and put it aside there, the DPW, with the insurance it was gonna be protected. And then something happened. I got struck three times with Lyme disease, and it was very, very debilitating during the course of this. I was never given notice that my equipment and tools were gonna be discarded, never, not an email, not a letter, nothing, no notice on my home. Matter of fact, this is no resolve to this immediate resolve. I'm here tonight to try to make a strong point that I want to go forward, not backwards, and I'll clean my own property up. I'll also mention I had four sheds there. I didn't have my property like this systematically. Everyone had to be taken away. Every, every shed had to be taken away, and I could go at any given time and walk my neighborhood and adjoining streets and show you people with sheds, more than one, that they're there, and they're not being targeted. I have a fault. I want to really correct. I, I, I think that when you take and you take everything in your lifetime and invest it in your home and then try to correct this, I need some help. I really need some help. I want to, uh, 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 under the fact that the conditions I'm living in, I've heard a comment a couple of weeks ago that people said maybe the house should be torn down. I don't think they have the right to say that.
Mr. Anzelo, if I could just ask you, I know you're mentioning about time. Someone reached out to me on your behalf back in early September to indicate you couldn't participate. And I believe you, you, you called me the next day, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that was in early September, right?
Yeah, yes, but do you know my health...
I, I just want to ask that you...
Where you were called from, what I was experiencing. I was on IV for five and a half days.
No, no, I understand. I understand, but it, it got put over to the 21st and you have people who have reached out on your behalf, is that correct? Mr. Tarson, someone from adult protective services. Again, I don't know if you have them here with you tonight, but if you do, they certainly, they can speak if they wish. You do have those people helping you, correct?
Well, informing me of what's going on. Are you contacting them so they could get a message to me, which, which is good. I'm glad you did.
Okay, no, I just wanted to compare...
But you told me you were informed from a Valley Hospital. Do you know why I was in a Valley Hospital?
No, I, no, I don't, but I just wanted to make, make it clear. You mentioned about needing help. There are services. You have the protective services, you have legal aid, and then someone from Valley Hospital is assisting you, correct?
Pardon me?
You have some, you have somebody from adult protective services helping you, correct?
Well, they helped me in the fact to inform me what's happening legally.
I understand, but...
I'm still homeless. They haven't been able to place me anywhere. And, and actually, in a COVID situation, I don't want to be in a, in a, a home with four or five people.
I understand.
I'm supposed to be by myself in my own home.
Okay, well, the village, uh, if, if takes this action tonight, I was going to, uh, you know, it wouldn't start before October 8th. You know, I don't know if there are specific items that you want to...
Well, can I ask you where all the items just took before? Over $50,000 worth of my equipment. Where are all those things? I have documentation, video, pictures of the pieces. I have pictures of it at the DPW. Do you know what they did with, I think, they, they put a dumpster in my yard. They put my possessions in there, ruined them. I went down there and tried to get my stuff. They dumped them out on the ground. I've got video of that. We're not discussing any of that. There's been a lot of negative things done to me personally and my equipment, and I worked for a living with those tools. I didn't find them on the sides of the road.
Okay, I understand.
I mean, I'm vetting myself because I'm hearing people say things that they don't understand what I experienced. But do you know what $133,000 is to a person 75 years old that has a debt, tax debt to pay, that forwards that to protect that home? And then you're talking about coming in. Can you answer how much were the bills each time you took everything off my property? How much were those bills?
Mr. Anzalmo, Mr. Anzalmo?
Yes.
Are you sensing anxiety in your statement and your speech?
Does anybody answer that? How much those bills were?
Mr. Anzalmo, Mr. Anzalmo. Let us not yell. Let us just discuss the matter at hand and the hearing that we're attending. These are the concerns that we are addressing here tonight is the property maintenance issue that currently exists in your front, side, and rear yards. This is what we're discussing. This is what the hearing is about. If you have someone there with you from Adult Protective Services that would like to speak on your behalf, they're more than welcome to. We understand. But what we're presenting here this evening is the addressing of the property maintenance issue at your current address at 27 Hillside Avenue. That's what we are addressing, and that will be addressed tonight. So is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Could I just say that my name is Derek Tarson from the Legal Aid Society. I'm here with Mr. Anzalmo.
Okay.
I mean, I just wanted to let you know that I am present and have been helping him get on to this.
I have no computer.
Right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Do we see any raised hands?
Not at the moment, Mayor. Again, you can raise your hands on the app by clicking on the Raised Hand application, or if you're on a telephone only, you can hit star nine. I'll give a few more seconds, Mayor, to see if anyone comes on.
Okay.
While we're waiting, just to address a couple of those issues, I think, you know, you heard from Mr. Anzalmo that, you know, he certainly has been made aware of what's going on. Obviously, you know his feelings about it, but and that there are people who are there for him in whatever capacity that may be, but it's, there are Adult Protective Services and Legal Aid who, at the very least, are assisting him in some manner. So I just want, that answers that earlier commenter's question.
All right, Mayor, at this time, I don't see any other raised hands or indication that someone would like to speak.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to.
Mayor.
Yes.
You and the President Hunt here, can I make a statement?
There you go. You can speak, Mr. Hunt, yes.
I was here on the last two cleanups. The first time we cleaned up as a supervisor, we staged everything in Bunker Hill. Mr. Anzalmo was able to obtain everything that was taken from Bunker Hill and whatever he didn't want to take, he left down there and then we threw away. The second round, a couple of years later, we staged everything at the DPW. And we left him with tools and some snow blower, lawnmower, so he can maintain the property. There was no mechanic tools taken. His chains were left, his jacks were left. None of that was taken in junk. It was more junk motors, old fences, and partial trailers Randy could verify. Charles Awicky and Randy gave him plenty of time to come down here and retain some of his material. And when that time ran out, stuff was put in the dumpster and taken to the junkyard.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
I wanted to clarify that for the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public participation of the meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have a proposed resolution. If you'd like me to read through it, I believe the board has it.
Yes, please.
So I will go through the entirety of the board does have and it's available. Whereas pursuant investigation by the Village of Suffolk Building and acting on complaints of residents of the village that was observed on the property located at 27 Hillside Avenue, Suffolk, New York, tax lot section 5460 block 3 lot 7, litter, debris, rubbish, garbage, junk, junk vehicles, and physical hazard on the property. Honor about July 11, 2020, Randy Ortiz served a notice through violation on the last known owner, namely John Anzalmo. See a notice pursuant to Village Code Section 205-6A, violation of Section 205-3 of the Suffolk Village Code, notifying the owner and the occupant of the property as a violation of the Village Code with respect to storage of vehicles, litter, debris, garbage, and junk which constitute health, safety, and physical hazards in which notice of violation is next here to incorporate it herein. And whereas the condition not having been remedied within the timeframe set forth in a notice for approximately two months thereafter, sorry, thereafter, the village provided notice appearing to consider a resolution permitting the village to undertake to remedy the property maintenance condition at the property and charge the course thereof to property owner next regular tax bill pursuant to Village Code 205-6C. Whereas said notice was posted in the Journal News and posted on the property. A copy was sent via email on September 5th to Adult Protective Services on behalf of John Anzalmo, regaining public hearing to be held on September 8th. During the public hearing was held on September 29th, 2020, and the owner and occupant having a right to be heard and having been heard. And whereas the village board is determined after public hearing that taking action to remedy the conditions is desirable for the good government of the village, the protection of its property, the safety, health, comfort, and general welfare of its inhabitants and the protection of their property therefore be resolved, village is hereby authorized to undertake to remedy the property maintenance condition pursuant to 205-6 to undertake action to remedy the condition by removing any such litter, garbage, junk, unregistered vehicles, and instituting any other appropriate legal actions or proceedings to effect remediation of this area, 27 Hillside Avenue. Be further resolved that the cost to the village to undertake to remedy this property condition pursuant to Village Code 205-6 shall be charged to the owner of the property on next regular tax bill. Such charge shall be due and payable by said owner at the time of payment of such bill. Be further resolved, such remediation shall commence on or after October 8th, 2020. Just going to say that again, remediation shall commence on or after October 8th, 2020. Continue until completed, no event beyond October 30th, 2020. Be further resolved, the copy of this resolution and notice be posted at the property by the code enforcement officer providing the owner with an opportunity to remove any items from the property properly stored same prior to the village commencing its remedial measures. Be further resolved, the village has received estimates for the work necessary to remedy the condition from several private contractors. The village hereby agrees to accept the estimate from 1-800-GOT-JUNK of $11,235 as being in the best interest of the village to ensure the work is completed at the lowest cost and authorizes them to perform the work necessary under the direction and with the assistance as necessary with the Department of Public Works and including authorization for the police department to make arrangements for the towing of vehicles. Be further resolved, the mayor or his designated is authorized to take such steps as is necessary to enforce this resolution. So if it feels appropriate, that's your option.
Okay. So I have the resolution authorizing the village to address property maintenance conditions at 27 Hillside Avenue in Suffolk. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, any further on the discussion?
I just wanted to address something that Mr. Anzalmo had said that I don't quite, you know, I just want to clarify this. In other words, each time that it's been cleaned up, he has been charged for this cost that would have been added to his tax bill. So in fact, he was notified of the cost each time because that amount was added to a bill that he should have received and paid, but he never paid, from what I understand.
But there's other circumstances here, Steve, so I don't think you need to be reminded of that.
Okay, any further? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion, Pat. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go back up and we'll go to number four on the agenda. Culture and Recreation, please, Ms. Kathy Mills. You have to unmute. Can't hear you.
She's not muted, but maybe she has the wrong audio selected. See if you can hit join with computer audio. Or at worst, you can call in, maybe.
Can you call in?
Can we come back to her while she tries to call in?
Sure. Kathy, we'll come back to you.
In the meantime, Kathy, go to your microphone on your Zoom screen and do a right click and see if you have the right setting there. It should be your, whatever microphone's on that computer.
Okay, maybe you could try to call in. I'm going to move on with the agenda. Mr. Rela, do you have any further on the, on your update, other than what you provided? You're muted also. You're muted. Unmute. There you go.
There you go.
Hello?
There you go, Fred.
Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to briefly mention a couple of things about the Community Development Block Grant. Two projects, the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we put in for $15,000 for the engineering costs for that project. And we're still waiting for reimbursement on that. They asked for some subsequent information and we supplied that to them. The project's going to begin at the end of October and will be done by the end of the year. So we're looking forward to that and the DPW is doing a great job on that. Just as a reminder, total cost of the project is $405,000 approximately. $285,000 is in grants and $120,000 approximately has to be covered through other means such as, by the village, such as CHIPS funds. So that's moving forward nicely. The other project I wanted to mention, and Charles may talk a little bit more about this under his section, is Parking Lot B. Okay, that's the repaving of the parking lot across from the post office. The cost for doing that project with the striping and everything is estimated at $250,000. We had a grant for $75,000 in 2018 that was awarded us. Excuse me, for $70,000 that was awarded us. And every project has to go through an environmental review. And that passed the environmental review and then we can begin the project. You can't expense any of the funds prior to that, otherwise you lose the grant, okay? And then we had, in 2019, we had the Park Avenue Sidewalk Project. And that project was approved, but then Community Development came back and said, oh, that's no longer in a low to moderate income area according to census data. So they allowed us to shift that $100,000 award over to the Parking Lot B project. So now we have another $100,000, so a total of $170,000 in grants for a $250,000 project. Charles was going to be going out for an RFP for engineering and design costs. Community Development has said that since we now have a new infusion of funds, we have to get the environmental recertified, okay? So that's going to take 30 to 60 days in order to get that done. But no cost can be expensed, such as engineering costs, until that's done. So hence, the RFP for the engineering for the Parking Lot B is going to be pulled. One thing of note, though, is that this project was not to begin as far as shovel in the ground until 2021 with a completion date of approximately mid-year or a little earlier. So we're still on board. There's just a little hurdle that we have to cross, but it's moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Fred.
Yep.
Thank you. Great update. Okay. Going back to Culture and Recreation, Ms. Mills. No. No, good. Can you hear us?
I think she said I do.
If you have a phone, you could try to call in on your phone and leave your audio on.
What else she might want to do is maybe log off the Zoom and log back in. She might be challenged with the right audio again.
Right.
Hold on, it appears she's trying to dial in.
Yeah, we can't hear you on the phone either, Kathy.
Kathy, which, Kathy, send me a text as to the last four digits of your phone number.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
So sorry about that, everybody.
Kathy, turn off your speaker to your computer.
I am really technologically challenged. I'm so sorry. Oh, my goodness.
Can you just shut down your computer and just use your phone?
I think I got it now.
Now, how about the speakers on your computer? Can you shut them down?
Oh, my goodness. I think I got it.
Okay.
Can you hear me from the phone?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Sorry, everybody. Okay, so a few things that we have coming up for recreation. We have the chair exercise classes at the gazebo still on Mondays and Wednesdays at 10:00 AM. We have our chair yoga classes at the gazebo on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 10:00 AM. We have Zoom, which is not at the gazebo, on Fridays at 10:00 AM. We have the walking club at Yorkshire Park that's going along very well. Groups meet up there on Wednesdays at 10:00. They walk around the park and it's been a great exercise activity for people. We just had the drive-in movie Sonic the Hedgehog down at the ball field at the commuter lot. It was a fabulous evening. We had a great crowd. I thank the recreation staff and DPW staff for making it the smoothest night that it possibly could have been. It was great. People had a really nice time. The screen worked out great. It was just a great evening. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, September 30th, is the Suffolk Fire Department Car Show. The weather looks like it's changed and it's looking better, so it's going to be a nice evening. The next thing we have this Saturday will be the Suffolk Halloween Chalk Contest. And it's on at, we're judging at 2 o'clock. So we're inviting all residents to go outside to get some fresh air, to decorate their driveway or the sidewalk right in front of their home. If you'd like to participate, you can email me in recreation@cmills@stuffernny.gov. I've been sending that email to people that have responding today and we look forward to that. The last one was a tremendous success and we're hoping for the same one for this one coming up. Next week, we have two items that it will not be on the agenda that I sent you earlier because these have come up since then. On Tuesday, October 6th, we're going to have Blue Shop with Walgreens. They are graciously coming back a second time. They're going to be outside the Suffolk Community Center, which is 41 Washington Avenue, from 10 o'clock to 5 o'clock. They changed the hours because people were requesting later than the previous one because of people working. So they have moved it from 10 o'clock to 5 o'clock. The next day, we have Coffee with the Mayor, Mayor Markunis. We're looking forward to this. On Wednesday, October 7th, at 11:30 at the gazebo, if people are interested in coming out to that, you can email us in Recreation to Nancy and her email address is nchristopher@stuffernny.gov. That'll be a nice opportunity for residents to come out, to meet with the mayor, to answer any questions that they have, and we're looking forward to that. The next event we have will be the Halloween Window Painting. This has been a staple in Suffolk for many, many years. People love it. We did adjust it according to some of the comments from the last board meeting. It will be with two participants or less and that will be due to social distancing. It usually, in the past, it has been up to three people. We're only going to count, we're only going to have two people per team or one person per team, depending how they sign up. So that will be. So that will be on Saturday, October 10th, from 10:00 to 12:30. And that's Suffolk middle school students. We have a nice turnout for that so far. And we also have added an event, which I'm still working on today with Keep Rockin' Beautiful. We have been requested, I know Paul, you and I have been talking about a few events for Keep Rockin' Beautiful. Keep Rockin' Beautiful is going to be in Suffolk on Saturday, October 10th. And we're gonna have that at 12:00 in the afternoon. So on the 10th, we're gonna have the window painting in the morning. And the recreation staff will turn over and do Keep Rockin' Beautiful in the afternoon. It's changed a little bit this year in being that they also keep their numbers down, so the maximum amount that we can have for volunteers for this Keep Rockin' Beautiful will be 50 people. And that will be a registration on the Keep Rockin' Beautiful site. In the past, I've been proud that we've had over 200 people in our cleanups. We do have to limit it this year, but it's gonna be a great, great event. We're trying to get it while the fall is still here. Keep Rockin' Beautiful, as we've talked about in the past, was closed over the summer because of COVID. So now they are reopened and we're trying to get some events in. So on the 10th, we will have Keep Rockin' Beautiful. So the flyers being put together, I'm just working with Keep Rockin' Beautiful and getting that all together. The next event is Sunday, October 25th. Going to be a Halloween event. We are still working out some details of what kind of event it's going to be. It's gonna be great. We just don't know exactly where we're going with it yet. And again, a lot of this has to do with crowds and COVID and social distancing. So we want to make it right for the residents, but we need to just work on a couple of things for that. The next thing, the community center will be having, the community center and Leo Liden will be two sites for Election Day on Tuesday, November 3rd. The next event after that is Veterans Day Ceremony at Soldiers Monument on Wednesday, the 11th, at 11:00 a.m. Let me just backtrack on here. So that's it for the events that I sent you from your agenda, from my agenda. And the next thing I have is opening the Suffolk Community Center. So as you know, we've had some thriving programs after the gazebo. We recently just had Dingo with a few of the seniors. They enjoyed it tremendously. So the need is there to run our programs a little longer. And the reason I'm asking for us to discuss it tonight is because the weather is turning on us. It is gonna be October at the end of the week. We would like to start using the community center for events, but not large events. I'd like to start going slowly with the events that we currently have in the program. Currently, we have chair exercise program and yoga at the center. I would like to continue with those and then programs as we see fit going forward. Some of the things that have held us up for going inside is the air handling systems, the filter systems, the cleaning, the sanitizing. We just needed to figure out how to go ahead with that. I did meet with Charles and Joe this week and talk, today's Tuesday, so last week. When we talked about how we can try to make sure the center is cleaned, how to make sure it's sanitized. Some of the things that we've talked about is the current filters that are at the center. We need to replace those and we need to come up with a maintenance plan of when those need to be replaced. We would like to do that weekly so that they are replaced. We get rid of anything old, get the new program in. And that will be a start of getting the community center ready. We have recreation staff. They would be cleaning the center. And DPW staff who currently sanitize the Village Hall, they would be sanitizing the community center. So we would have the same protocol that we do at Village Hall over at the community center. I'm not asking to do senior meetings yet. I don't think we're there yet. That's going to take some time. I don't think the seniors are ready for that as well, which is what a large group of people in the center would be. We don't want to go there yet, so again, it's just the current ones that we're doing. Down the line, we would love to do the outside, some of the other events that we typically would do. But as of right now, we're not looking to do that. So my hope is that we can further discuss opening the center for programs that we currently have in place with recreation staff and then inviting people in to be at the center. So that's what I'm hoping for.
So that's the feedback that we're getting. I know I spoke with Kathy and a lot of the seniors and a lot of the people that attend the programs, the exercise programs that are keeping them healthy. Actually, one woman sent in a great email to, I believe it was Nancy, Nancy and Kathy, saying that they truly appreciate their help and really putting them on the fast track to becoming healthy and staying fit during COVID. I think it's a positive. If we have all of those precautionary measures in place, sanitizing, cleaning, ensuring the social distancing, that we should allow the community center to open in a limited fashion, as Kathy stated, with, you know, with all the proper controls in place. How does the board feel? What's that, Mr. Bruen?
That sounds reasonable.
Sounds reasonable, okay. Anyone else? Is there any objection?
No.
No? Okay, so that's great. So we'll work on that, Kathy. We'll talk a little bit more tomorrow and you can make sure we talk with Joe and Charles once again and we'll start working on that.
Excellent.
I do, I'm sorry, I guess I do have a comment. You worked with Charles, Joe, and they can manage that?
They can manage changing over the filters, Joe, and they can manage the sanitizing. The cleaning, you know that we do have staff there for cleaning. But the sanitizing, yes, they can handle that. We did talk about.
The staff can clean?
The staff would clean the center, yes, but the DPW crew would sanitize and that means doing the you know, the sanitizing of it. That's what they would do.
And I would assume that we're also gonna make sure that we get everyone's you know, they're gonna make sure that they're okay and, you know, do the signing and the temperature checks, correct?
Just the screening. I don't think we were going with the temperature checks, but if you feel more comfortable, Kathy. But we haven't been doing that.
No, I was just asking. I'm just asking.
Yeah. Elaine, Elaine is in the community center. Elaine has been a great asset along with Nancy and Kathy and they've really been managing it perfectly fine. And I'm sure, I'm sure that they'll do a great job inside also.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, that's great then.
So thank you very much and my apologies again for the sound. I just realized my daughter did tell me one time that her computer does not have the sound on it. So I have two daughters, too many computers floating around here, so next time I will use the other one. So my apologies.
Welcome to COVID.
Thank you, everybody. I'm here. I will call back in if anyone has any questions. I'm just gonna mute my, I'm gonna turn off the phone, but I am available to call back in and I'll stay the whole meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Lieutenant Lockland with the Police Department update, please.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So for the month of September, the Police Department responded to 491 calls for service. The call types range from suspicious persons, motor vehicle accidents, disorderly persons, medical emergencies, noise complaints, welfare checks, fraud and harassment reports, burglar and fire alarms, emotionally disturbed persons, intoxicated persons, hazardous conditions, animal complaints, runaway juveniles, domestic disputes and a variety of other routine calls for service. During the month, we made several arrests charging multiple individuals, multiple individuals with burglary in the second degree, multiple counts of criminal mischief, harassment, endangering the welfare of a child, criminal contempt in the second degree, aggravated DWI, strangulation in the second degree, and assault in the third degree. In September, we also conducted two targeted speed enforcement studies, which I'll briefly go over with the board. The first study was initiated based off a petition to the Village Board from residents of Lower Washington Avenue, requesting the Village Board install stop signs or speed bumps between Boulevard and Orange Avenue to slow down speeding traffic. Excuse me. Between September 14th and September 22nd, we conducted 16 different speed enforcement details at this location. Although we did issue a few summonses for speeding, the overall data we compiled does not support the assertion that there's a particular speeding problem in the area. During this detail, the speed of over 200 vehicles was measured and captured by a laser speed measuring device. The majority of these vehicles were traveling between 20 and 30 miles an hour. The average speed for the vehicles measured during this detail was 25.33 miles an hour. And the posted speed limit for this location is 25 miles an hour. To address the request of the residents to install stop signs of speed bumps at that location, the United States Department of Transportation does not recommend using stop signs or speed bumps for, I should say, stop signs for speed control. They've conducted many studies on the subject and the studies have shown that stop signs are not an effective measure for controlling or reducing mid-block speeds. In fact, the overuse of stop signs may cause drivers to carelessly stop at the stop signs that are installed. One such study that they cited actually showed that placing stop signs along a street may actually increase the peak speed of vehicles because motorists tend to increase their speed between stop signs to regain the times they spend stopping at the signs. Based on this information, it's my recommendation to the board that there is not a particular speeding problem with vehicles in this area and that additional traffic control measures are not warranted at this location. The Police Department will, however, periodically monitor the area and continue to conduct traffic enforcement details as necessary. The second traffic enforcement conducted was initiated by a request from Mayor Markounis after receiving a complaint from a resident with a parked side drive in the area of Foxwood Pond and regarded speeding vehicles. Between September 25th and September 27th, we conducted six speed enforcement details at this location. The speeds of 91 vehicles were measured during the detail. The average speed for the vehicles measured was 24.85 miles an hour. The posted speed limit for this area is 25 miles an hour. Again, the data captured does not indicate that there's a particular speeding problem at that location. But again, we'll periodically conduct traffic enforcement details in this area to ensure compliance. The only other item that I really have for the agenda is for the board to accept the resignation of part-time police officer John Keanan. I believe the board already has his letter of resignation effective September 10th, 2020. The remainder of my items are personnel items, which I don't know if the board wants to discuss that now or wait until an executive session.
You're muted, Ed.
Ed, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would wait till the executive session and we'll review the personnel matters in detail.
Understood.
If the board is in agreement. Okay.
Lieutenant Lockland, I had a question regarding the Washington Avenue speeding situation, which wasn't anything, which is great to hear, actually. I believe I had mentioned, I believe it was in an email, I had requested that if there's any way that you could respond on behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, this information so that they know that this was addressed. Because there were about six or seven or eight, roughly, I don't have the letter in front of me, residents who signed on to this letter to the board. But they may or may not tune into these Zoom meetings. I have no idea. So I was wondering if there's any way to give them a written reply to the effect of what you stated.
Absolutely, that's not, that's not a problem. I just need to get the information from the village clerk as to, you know, who the signers of the petition were, but I can absolutely do that.
I appreciate it. It would be very helpful just to know that they know that the board is being responsive to them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for that detailed update and thank you for doing those speed checks on, at both locations, which we received numerous complaints about. So it is helpful and it's, as Trustee Albert said, to make the complainants or the petitioners aware. That will be great. Thank you, Lieutenant Lockland. Great job.
Thanks for the great work.
Lieutenant, are there any summary comments you want to make about the overtime? I know you sent it out earlier, but I think we're, I think the board should be aware that we are, we are, you know, running ahead of, ahead of budget, so I know there were some, some discussions we're gonna have with dispatch or vacancies and things like that, but I'm sure we'll talk about more as we're talking about personnel items, because they're probably impactful, but I just want to make sure everybody is aware that we are running over, so it's it's an important thing that we might want to address because as we know with COVID, we've got some risk with some of the revenues we're expecting as well.
Absolutely. One of the items that I addressed in my email to the board was we had a particularly heavy overtime month in, I'm sorry, August. Summer months are typically heavier for overtime for us due to vacations and leave time for officers, so I don't necessarily know that we're ahead. It also was not a, it was a particularly bad bump because we had two retirements during the month that were not filled at that point, so that did impact overtime for August. Overtime typically, if you're going by the past, does slow down in the winter months. Like I said, the warmer weather is typically when, you know, we have the most shortages, so I'm more than willing to discuss with the board, you know, the overtime concerns and and, you know, put our heads together and see what we can do about that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Let's move on. Is Judge Bonacor on the line?
I didn't see him listed, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, you know what? What, tonight? Okay, we're gonna, we're going to go past Judge Bonacor. And we're gonna move on to the Department of Public Works.
Okay, with that, that's gonna be Charles.
Mr. Zwicki, yes.
Charles, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, I'd like to provide the board with an update. Fred Rela has touched on this project regarding the Wayne Avenue project. It will commence at the end of October with a completion date mid-December. The, an RFP for the design engineering for the parking lot was, and currently is being worked on, but however, as Fred mentioned, a engineering review is required and we can't proceed with that RFP until that's concluded. The next item would be the filling maintenance helper position at the Water and Sewer Department. That position is currently in the budget.
So did?
The next, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Was that posted? Did we post that?
Yeah, oh yes, yeah, that position was posted as the union requires it tends to be posted for 10 days.
And no one else, no one else was interested?
There's two candidates for that position.
Okay.
And I believe the posting ends, I think, the end of this week or the beginning of next week. I'm not sure of the exact date. The next item is the Dubard Professional Services for proposal for drawing modifications conforming to Wicks Law and construction management for the Goshier Projects in the amount of $119,796. I believe I emailed the board a copy of that proposal. So that was, that proposal was previously reviewed by Goshier and they were in agreement with, with the amount.
Okay, so we have.
And, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine.
Okay, the next item is requesting funding for a new 20 cubic yard garbage truck, be it a chassis, body and plow in the amount of $240,000. So that's that particular item is in the requested capital project list in the budget. It has, but however, it's not funded, currently funded. I guess Michael can speak to that.
Michael, how can we fund the possibility of purchasing, acquiring the garbage truck with the upcoming renewals?
Well, our next renewal, in fact, I'm gonna bring that up in my section, but our next ban renewal comes due in November, about mid-November. And we are putting together for our financial advisors right now what we need. So we can add that $240,000 in and that would be taking it out in terms of a bond anticipation note for whatever the period of time that we're allowed to borrow that for. And pay it off during either a five. As a matter of fact, they just extended the law to allow us to go up to seven years with many different notes. So in any event, we can do that and in the meantime, work with Fred Rela to see if there's, I believe he was actually researching to see if there was any grants out there, were any grants out there for garbage trucks, but that's how we would do it, Mayor. We would have that resolution before you we'll go to the bond council for the resolution. And then have that probably in our October meeting. That'd be coming up or at the very latest in November.
Okay, that sounds good. I know that there was issues, Mr. Zwicki. I know that there was issues with Mr. Zwicki with the, with the other garbage truck and the age and the deterioration.
Yeah.
Motor on, or the engine on one, is that correct?
Right. So, so we currently have three garbage trucks. One, the R1 needs, it's a 1997 and it needs to be overhauled and many, many items need to be replaced and upgraded. R2 is the one that the mayor just spoke about. The, the motor needs to be replaced and the total cost to do that is approximately $15,000. R3 is a 2001 and that, that truck we bought used a number of years ago. That needs significant work as well. The hopper needs to be rebuilt. So we're, we're in really tough straits in terms of garbage trucks right now.
Yes, I just want to make you aware that about two years ago, we received a grant for $250,000 for a new truck for the DPW, which was a chassis truck which had interchangeable beds that you could put on top of it, like a dump truck and also a snowplow. And speaking to Charles this week, it's too short notice really to get a grant that quickly. You know, just, you know, and they do take time, you know, six months, a year or whatever, but he will be needing another garbage truck after this one. So I'm also starting to research for that. Okay.
Yeah, I really think, I really think with COVID coming up, we really need to look at the inventory that we have on everything that's in the village, on what vehicles are going to need to be replaced, what we're going to need to work on, because I think we really have to manage, you know, we're not going to come out of COVID in the next six months. And I really think that we need to have a full understanding of what the longevity of this equipment is and what else needs to be replaced. You know, it's, it's something I've asked for before and nothing against Charles or Joe or anything, but I really think we need to, we really need to spend special attention to it because we can't let the DPW not have safe equipment by any means. Also, the police department can't have not safe equipment and/or fire department. These are all things that we need to be doing a 10-year plan. Five-year plans don't work anymore. We need a 10-year plan. So if we could all rally together and get that information, that would probably be a really good thing because we're going to have to snake and crawl through COVID to try and find money to replace our important infrastructure.
Charles, which one of these trucks were you looking to replace, the three that you listed, you described?
Well, the R1 is the oldest truck. And however, R2 is the truck that needs to have the, the motor will be replaced. It would be between those two. We'd have to make that assessment. Depending on how things work out with the engine replacement. It would be either, I would say at this point in time, it would be either R1 or R2. We want to get together with Joe and, you know, go through the details and get his opinion often.
Okay.
Charles, on an unrelated note, I was, I was talking to Joe Hunt and he brought to my attention that there's three laborer positions currently in the street department that are unfilled. They're vacant. One of them was supposed to be filled, but that employee was moved over to the water department to take care of stuff over there. So I, I guess my question is, what is, you know, what is your goal and/or plan on filling these positions? Because they are budgeted, they are paid for, but there are not currently any employees in those roles. And, and my understanding is there's a, there's a shortage of manpower essentially. And going back to the situation with 27 Hillside, you know, I understand, you know, we basically, we've approved to use an outside contractor to do the cleanup work. Whereas, you know, if we had enough employees, I feel like we could have used our public works to do that work and bill, and bill for it instead of having to pay money out. So I'd like your thoughts on.
Yeah, well, we, we do have plans obviously of filling those positions. We're reviewing the applications that are currently, that we currently have and reviewing the candidates and we will be, you know, asking the board to fill those positions.
Okay, okay, because I, I think we should, you know, because they are budgeted. This is money we've already assigned to be used for those purposes. And I, I, I feel it's important to have, you know, the employees in the, in the roles that, that are budgeted, you know.
I totally agree. It just, you know, quite honestly, it's a tight job market right now. So we're, we're reviewing our candidates and seeing which would, which candidates would be best to suit those or fill those positions.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Janito, for Treasury's update, please.
Yes, Mayor. Well, at the top of the list, we are currently working with the auditors to finalize the 2020 audit. That's for the fiscal year ending May 31, 2020. And hope to have that done shortly with a review in October and publication probably in November. We also have going on, the Environmental Facilities Corp. is going to be issuing, issuing their 2020 B as in Bravo bonds on December 17th, 2020. And they've asked us to complete the paperwork necessary and finalize any reimbursements that we have on the short term with them by October 23rd. So we're getting that all together right now. And we can then get reimbursed from the bonds beyond that. We have the bond anticipation note that I mentioned earlier that's coming due in November. So that's a great time now for Charles to bring forward to me anything that he actually will be needing money for in the next year. Now, when I say that, I mean that we actually will have to spend that money. We don't want to borrow money and then have it not being used on a project or purpose, you know, for more than a year. And also, one very big thing coming up is the government, I'm sorry, Governor's Office of Storm Recovery. As you know, we had the financing that we took over for that grant that we received. There's $600,000 roughly that's available to us in generators for critical facilities and another $2 million or so that's involved with the hardening of the water wells. So we are in the process of working with the government's, Governor's Office of Storm Recovery to get that all processed. So that's basically what we have.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Janito. Mr. Magrino, on an update, please.
Yes, the public here, the continuation of the public hearing regarding the special permit for the private club at 62 Lafayette, that's also known as the cigar beer, referred to as cigar beer. I have not heard anything from them. I will reach out to Jay Greenwell. Since I haven't heard anything from them, I'm assuming they're not going to be going forward. So we'll clarify that next week. Next, this was put on there, we received from the County Department of Health a request to authorize the use of the community center as a place for distribution of vaccine if and when there is a vaccine. This is something that has been basically dropped on every municipality in the county. I'm anticipating that, you know, there would be a great demand, I should say, they're anticipating there'd be a great demand for places, you know, where there can be say mass distribution, but distribution in many places so that it's not all it is, is a letter saying they can use it for any signing of it or raising the signature on it. We always speak to the county because, you know, there's really no, you know, we, we share facilities all the time. Most obvious is voting. This is a little different, a little bit of an intrusion, but I would think something that most would be interested in, so. I do want to talk to them before we go ahead and sign. So does anybody have any questions on? They really haven't given much detail on it. It's more, you know, I can see they're doing it in anticipation of being advised that we can start distributing a vaccine.
You're cutting out a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
So the county wants to come into the village and start dispersing?
If and when there's a vaccine, they want to set it up as a, as a play, you know, it's like getting a flu shot or something of that nature. I think because of the demand and, and they're doing it to all the municipalities.
And we are. I guess because, I guess because the village has already started with the flu shots unbeknownst to, I don't know, I guess I, I missed that one during the last couple of weeks. Okay, I have no questions. I just, I just couldn't quite hear you well.
Sorry about that, yeah.
All right.
And the last, if you recall, we, the village authorized the outdoor dining and extension of the sidewalk dining. And I double checked, I think it was November 2nd, 11:59 PM on November 2nd. So as we're approaching that date, I guess you know, I consider extending it to December 31st. You know, I know that heaters, places that may have tents, you know, heaters may be an issue because if the tents are not fire rated, that's something we can discuss with the building inspector. Whether or not, you know, there might be a warm day in November or December, that the restaurant could throw some tables out there and have diners. Be the purpose of that. With or without a heater, I guess.
I think it, there's probably no harm in extending it. I think it's a great idea. It still gives the businesses an opportunity to have outside dining if they so choose. If they don't, they don't.
What if we have a, a snowstorm and we've got some sections of Lafayette that have cones and, you know, the barriers that we have up, what, what do we do?
I would say in anticipation, in anticipation of a snowstorm, we would probably have to suspend it and then pull the cones in. It's a great, it, it could become a problem. But if you.
We could add that to the resolution that
Right.
Mayor can suspend it for a anticipation of a storm event. I think that may be in the, the past resolution.
It is, yes.
It is, okay. Good.
But we're not going to allow, you know, the gasoline heaters or what, what's the proposal for that? Because I don't know about you guys, but I was freezing the last few days before this heat wave hit again. So are we allowing the kerosene heaters? What do we kind of? What are we thinking?
Well, I, I would think that's something we could ask Steve Conley about to weigh in on. As I said, if it's a tent.
Is that part of it or not part of it?
This is just out for discussion. So, you know, we're not voting on anything tonight, but I'd like to ask him his feeling on having, I know with a tent, there's a concern because of the fire. I mean, obviously there's concern if there's a tent or not, if there's a fire issue, but I think, I don't think you can authorize it with a, there's a tent in that. Yes, it's, you know.
So. Type of forced hot air, I believe. I mean, that detail or electric, that detail would have to be looked at by the, the fire inspector in the building department.
Right, as long, as long as all the store owners know that they, they just can't arbitrarily put them out, I think we should do as much as we can for them 110%.
Yes, well, I think, yeah, I think what you're saying is we need to provide guidelines of what types of heaters and what the limitations are. Okay, yeah, yeah, that's a good, great point.
We've been in discussion with the building department and the restaurant owners, so we are working on it. But if we continue that, but actually, we have to put that notice out anyway, the guidelines and adhere to the guidelines and then extend the.
That'd be nice to share with the board.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees' update.
I have nothing at this time.
I do not either.
Okay.
I think I've spoken enough tonight.
I wanted to follow up on, I think I mentioned it at one of the last meetings, a resident had, had actually brought up about the possibility of inspections by the fire chief, fire department for commercial and rental properties, basically rental properties or whatever, to keep everybody safe. You know, there's a lot of question marks on the safety of some of the apartments and whatnot. And this would also be a possible opportunity to, to keep everybody safe at the same time as funding it with fees that would pay for itself. And I brought it up at another meeting and I just wanted to follow up if anybody's given it any thought yet. And other municipalities doing this already, have been doing this for years.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I don't know if any over, anybody at code enforcement has had any input on it.
I think the fire expected inspector or the fire chief, I know, provided some input, but they would have to elaborate on that and the process with the building department.
I, I'd just like to see something at least tangible to discuss and so far, we have nothing to discuss.
Okay. Okay.
A good idea to have an annual inspection to make sure that people haven't subdivided up rooms illegally and things that you see on the news, a fire, the firemen run in there and what they thought was one apartment is now three little ones.
Right, there's a lot of possibility for danger, for sure.
Is code enforcement, is Mr. Ortiz on, on the meeting?
I don't think he's on anymore.
He, he was. Is your question, do they go in yearly? Yeah, they're supposed, I believe that that's.
Yes.
That's what they're supposed to be doing.
All of the rentals and suffering get a yearly?
Not all the rentals.
I don't think that happens.
More, more than, more than, I believe it's more than two family. And then we do the rental registry for all. But I, I would need to have clarification from the building department on that. I think it's two or more on the inspection, but not two family.
Three or more gets inspected annually.
I believe. Okay, all right. All right. Motion to adjourn the workshop.
Mayor, you have an item on the sewer grievance board. Did you want to cover that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we spoke about it at the last meeting. If anyone had a recommendation to appoint a member to the sewer grievance board. I don't know if any of the trustees had any recommendations. We, we need one individual.
I do not.
Okay.
I do not, but I don't know if I can be a board member and do it. I gladly do it just to make sure that we're in compliance. So, you know, maybe we can.
Hmm, interesting. I don't know if the trustee can.
We can't have a vacancy, right, Rob?
No, you may wish to ask for people to submit resumes if they're interested. You put something out.
Okay.
Can that go on the website, Ed?
Sure.
27 people zooming in right now, maybe one of them would be interested.
Yeah.
Raise your hand.
That's funny.
Lance Weinstein raised his hand.
Lance Weinstein would like to be on the sewer grievance board?
Well, he raised his hand.
Well, maybe send an email to the mayor and.
Yes, please send in an email. Mr. Weinstein, that would be great. Okay, all right. So what we're going to do now is motion to do we need to reconvene back into the workshop?
We probably should.
Yeah. Except if you want to adjourn to an executive, I mean, to go into executive session, that was your.
Right, to go into an executive session for personnel matters.
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert.
Second, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, so motion to close the meeting.
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Seventeen, Albert, taking my notes, second.
Second, Trustee Barone.
You're on. Okay, thank you everyone for coming out this evening, whoever's left on Facebook or on, on Zoom, but have a good night. We'll see you on Monday.
Good night, everyone, stay safe.
Good night.